Give her another try.
So, as I look at the January numbers, I'm pretty pleased with them. Our sales taxes, you know, at that point was right on track. Home rule sales tax down a little bit. Local use tax, the highest it's ever been. Remember, that's your online sales. And those revenue dollars have really saved us in some of these other areas that have been declining because of COVID. Income taxes stayed strong because of unemployment is taxed. MFT and transportation tax is down a little bit, but not as near as bad as we had expected it to be. Obviously, for January, you'll notice video gaming is only at 19,620. If you remember, that would be November. So, everything was shut down again mid-November, which is why that number is so low. So, for February, for the video gaming, there will be a zero. And then, because that would be December numbers. And then, for January, we should, or for March, which would be January, we should have, you know, half the month, or close to half the month, where we were back open again. So, we'll continue to follow those. In the other sheets that I gave you, when I showed the comparables to last year and how we're doing, you'll notice here, again, the local use tax is up 29% compared to what it was budgeted for. So, those numbers have really helped us. And income tax is up 2%. So, we're happy that that's staying right where it should be. On the other page, municipal sales tax, we're only down a little under 4%. So, that number continues to get better as the year goes on. And same with the home rule sales tax. That's down 8% from what's budgeted. So, the numbers continue to improve. Not that we still aren't showing a decline in revenue in other areas. There's still things we need to watch. Things that you wouldn't think about, the utility taxes, especially electric. When you have businesses that aren't open, nobody's there to use the utilities. Same with water and sewer. We're running into that as we look at some of Public Works' revenue numbers. When you don't have businesses open, they're not there to use those, which directly reflects the revenues here for the city. So, we'll continue to look at that. The Cures Grant, which was the grant we gave out to the businesses. I have a lot of reports due. It is the state. So, I have a tremendous amount of work to do that has to be into them by Friday. So, I'll be working on that a lot this week. And then, we'll be discussing whether we want to apply for another round of the abandoned property grants. That is due in mid-February. So, right now, I have the building department kind of scoping out what, how many abandoned properties are out there, and if it's worth our time to go through this grant process again and see if we can do some good work like we just did with some of the other homes over the last couple of years. So, that's about it. If there's any questions?
Questions for Ms. Tobin?
I have some questions.
Please proceed. Ms. Freeman?
So, Becky, I don't see anywhere on here the utility tax comparables?
I do not, I do not have that on here. You will see that in the monthly spreadsheets that I give you, but I do not have it on this sheet.
Could we start including that on these?
I can. It's a little hard right now, because if you remember, we started receiving the NICOR municipal tax. So, the gas is going to look way different from last year. I don't even have anything to compare it to, because the revenue is much higher than past years. The electric is the one that I've been talking about. I can put it on here. But here, again, it's hard. It fluctuates from month to month and year to year based on how hot your summer is, how cold your summer is, how mild your winter is. It's one of those that's really hard to gauge, but I can start to include it.
Okay, thank you. And then, I had a couple. I wanted to follow up on the Cures Grant. Last week, Alderman Fleury brought up about the Cures Grant dispersment. And I think you said that they had all been handed out, save for one. So, I think my questions are for Mayor Chamberlain. Where, where do these Cures Grants come from?
The state.
Do you mean the dollars?
Where did we get the money from? Yeah.
So, initially, it came out of our general fund. That's all the paperwork that I have to turn in this week. We were approved for a $350,000 grant. It's a federal grant that's been passed through the state. So, it's federal dollars that were given to the state, and then the state was to allocate to the municipalities.
Okay. So, they stemmed from federal, then to state, then to Belvidere recipients. So, how were they distributed? Were they mailed out?
It depends. Most of them were actually delivered in person. If we were able to and if the businesses were open, we were getting in touch with the business owners and actually delivering them by hand.
Okay. I think it would have been appropriate, maybe, for recipients to come to the city council and accept them publicly. I think the city council had a little bit, at least, to do with the procurement. That would have been nice, because I heard a nasty rumor that the mayor was hand-delivering them accompanied by a photographer. And, you know, I wanted to ask him that, you know, surely you're not going to be using these grants for your political ads or any type of political gain, correct?
Well, I think you're out of line, but I'll answer your question. The photographer was Ms. Tobin. And we went around to take them, the paperwork, and hand them the checks personally. And those pictures are posted on the city website.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes, Alderman Porter.
I wanted to ask, I heard a rumor going around that the, some of this Cures money, like half of it, was given to businesses that do not have a business registration license, or not complying with the business registration license. And I'd just like to hear a comment on that, because I don't know that that's right to be giving it to companies that are not complying with our local ordinances.
Becky, you want to address that?
To begin with, that was not a requirement for the grant. If you go back and look at what the grant application, we needed some form of documentation. It could be a local business registration, a state, their liquor license, something that showed that they were in good standing. So, we did not require that as part of the grant process, especially with COVID going on. Some of these businesses haven't been open to even think about getting their business registration through the city. So, there was a check and balance to make sure that these businesses were in good standing with the state. And a lot of them actually filled them out as they were handing in their grant application or before they received their money. So, we did continue to get more business registrations as we handed out the grants.
Can I put it back on that a little bit, Becky? Because I recall Alderman Snow specifically asking if these grant recipients were all registered with the, had a BRL with the city. And I believe it's on tape that your response was, yes, that was one of the prerequisites.
And actually, no. And I had the city clerk go back and look at that, and that is not what I said. So, I said we required a form of registration, whether it was state or local.
Questions or comments? Becky, you want to proceed? Okay. At that point, then, we will look at the fire budget first for fiscal year 2022. Chief, Beck, and Sean, please proceed. Thank you, Ms. Tobin.
As you'll see up on the screen there, we have our mission statement, which we really take serious at the Belvidere Fire Department. What, every word that's on there, we mean it. I'm not going to read it verbatim, but there it is. "We will definitely strive to maintain a high standard of professionalism through continuing education and training of all our members." BFD at a glance. "The fire department currently operates with 30 total personnel. One chief, one administrative assistant, Christine Gilman, three captains, one of them sitting here next to me tonight, Captain Shadle, and then three lieutenants, 22 firefighter paramedics. During this past year, firefighter Mike Scarpetta retired back in May with over 26 years of service. And then, we were able to hire his replacement, Robert Gunstein, who is a local talent. He came to us with excellent firefighter and paramedic skills. So, he was, he was ready-made, and he's been a really welcome addition to our department." Because of the pandemic, our training is down this year for outside-type training. As you can see up here, we did, we were able to get three individuals trained in the safety officer certification. Something that's very important. It's required to have a safety officer on any fire scene. We're to, that's, that's something that we deeply believe in as well. So, also, we are able to get firefighter Stefan Mead, his certification in fire apparatus engineer. What that basically means for everybody out there is he's able to drive our fire engines and is able to pump at the right pressures. Okay? Rope operations was something, firefighter Peel got in, got in this year. And then, you'll see Hendrickson up there for, for separate occasions. That is because firefighter Hendrickson was our newer, one of our newer guys. He went to academy, and he was able to get all those certifications that you see. One of the things I do want to let everybody know, the child safety seat technician, that's something that we do at the fire department. Two more people were certified in that, Hendrickson and Gunstein. Now, what that is, is folks, or people can, our assistants come to our fire stations and get, make sure that their child safety seats are properly installed. We have numerous technicians that do that. And we're, as far as I know, we're like one of the few, maybe the only, fire, fire department that does that in our area. So, I want to move on to 2020 and 21, the equipment and building improvements. As you can see there, Station Up, Station One upstairs remodel consists of a large area, 1,700 square feet altogether. It's 85% complete. We're getting so close, I can't, I know all the guys are, just can't wait for this to happen, where we're getting close to move back into that area and get back to normal at Station One. Station number two, the bathroom, was totally remodeled. That station was built in 1975. It started showing its age, and we're able to totally remodel, and everyone's really pleased with that. And then, this year also, we purchased what I call BTAC 2. That would be Belvidere Tactical 2, 2 representing the fact that it's going to be stationed at Station Two. It's going to be a rapid-response vehicle and expected to be in service by March of '21. I want to thank all the citizens, the mayor, and the council for providing the means for these improvements. This doesn't change in the back. Our objectives pretty much remain the same. And as you see, is to continue our education for our firefighters and our officers. We want to continue to upgrade our standard, standing, standard operating procedures so that we can ensure the best response, efficient, ensure our workers' safety, and then cut down the liability to the city. Then, we're going to continue to upgrade and maintain our equipment and our buildings. And of course, we want to continue, this, this is always going to be there, to provide excellent service that exceeds expectations. Okay, page one of 20. That's our department budget. I'll take any questions with this here. I mean, I could go, we could read it and...
We'll go page by page. This is just the summary.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks, Becky. Right here, this is the salaries. If you see the note there, fiscal year '22 includes a salary for two new firefighters that were approved in the fiscal year '21 budget process. But the positions have not been filled due to COVID-19 and the shortfall in revenue. New initiatives for us this year would be C-ABOB. It's the same as last year. The hopes are that we can get those two firefighters at some point, realizing that what we have going on right now, of course, is unprecedented. This pandemic is, it's a burden to us all. But I would like to still, at some point, if, if revenue's there, I'd like to be able to get these two people onboard with our department.
Currently, the practice is to replace someone who retires.
That's correct, yeah. In May, we'll be realizing that as well. We'll have three people retiring from our department. So, therefore, three people will be replacing them. So, any questions in this, for this right here? All right, page, this is page three of 20. Overtime. One of the things that I brought to your attention last year was my 10-man shift asking. One of the, one of the reasons that I felt that to get 10 people across for each shift, A, B, and C shifts, would be that it would reduce overtime. And I could definitely show anybody who would like to see those kind of figures and where I, where I come up, where I get those figures. Anytime, feel free to give me a call. Come down and see me at the station, and I'll be happy to go over that again, just to review. So, the next page is page four, and it's fire pension. I just so happen to have our foremost expert in fire pensions with me tonight. Captain Shadle is the president of the fire pension board. And if anyone has any questions, this is a great time to ask right now for this guy.
Who is on our pension board at this time? Who are the members?
Right now, actually, there's only three. It's myself, Lieutenant Letourneau, and retired Chief Worrell. And we're looking to fill two spots with Ron and George leaving the board.
Okay, because I'd be more than happy to do that myself.
All right, moving on. Page five. Health insurance, not much I can really speak on that. Yeah, if you would, please. Thank you.
You'll notice the insurance line item has actually gone down from last year, and that's for two reasons. If you recall, we had a 2% reduction that'll be in place for all of fiscal year, or calendar year '21 and '22. And also, per the union contract, the percentage of the employee pays went from 12% to 14%. So, the city's actually saving money, a little bit more of a burden on the employees now, because they're paying a higher percentage of their premium. But that is a cost savings to the city.
Next page would be dental, dental insurance. Page six of 20. Becky, you want to talk about that again? Okay, all right. Okay, page seven. Right here, this shows, this is a uniform allowance, and it shows us with 31 personnel. This year, the contract has gone up as far as uniform allowance, and it's at $1,250 per person. As you can see in here, like I said, the new initiative, if, if the hires happen, these funds, this will be the figure. And of course, if not, then it's reduced by 20, what, 2,500. One thing in there, if you guys see this, probably every year, Class A uniforms, that's per contract. That is a $750 figure. Those are the uniforms that we wear when we have ceremonies and retirements and, and different functions of that sort. Any questions on uniform allowance?
I have, I have, I have some questions.
Okay.
So, I like to get out last year's budget and compare these. And it's, it's hard when we get them on Friday and our meetings on Monday, because it's a lot when we do two at a time. So, I spend my weekends poring over this stuff. But last year, we had 29 personnel at $1,000. And I understand that this year, we have, we would have 31 if we added two firefighters. But it went up to $1,250 each. And then, last year, we allowed two Class A uniforms at $1,400. And this year, we're only allowing one per contract?
Yes. Okay. So, a couple of different things there. Last year, we're at $1,000 per, per individual. And then, this year, contractually, they're awarded $250 more. Okay? So, that's why that figure is that. The Class A uniforms, that, that's dictated by how many personnel. We might have had two new guys last year, which that was the case. And so, both of them guys would get Class A uniforms. This year, we just have one new guy. So, therefore, it'd be just one $750 expense for a Class A uniform.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, please proceed.
It's about the uniforms. Do they have to give you their receipts after they buy it and they get reimbursed? Or how does that work? Or do they get paid first?
Hi, Wendy. This is Captain Shadle. So,
Okay.
as far as that, it was negotiated to be paid as a cash payment. As far as administration, we would have preferred to have it done as a reimbursement. And, but that's just not how it came out at the end.
Okay, because I, it's not with the fire department, but I've heard that people have gotten their money for allowance, for uniform allowance, and then they don't have a uniform. So, they're pocketing the money.
Yeah. So, they, they get the money upfront, all right? And it's up, it's up to the leaders of the department and the people themselves, who are fire members, to make sure they, they police themselves as far as how they, they look and appear. So, it's up to myself, too, to make sure that my officers are keeping our guys looking professional in appearance, and their uniforms are nice and crisp and, and clean. And as well,
Thank you.
new. So...
Because it keeps them accountable. Okay, thank you.
I certainly do. So, you can ask them all.
Any other questions on this item, on this page?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Frank.
Okay, page eight of 20. This is the training line. If we have any questions here, I, once again, Captain Shadle is our training coordinator for the Belvidere Fire Department, and he is here to answer any type of question you might have for training.
I, I had one for that.
Please proceed, Alderman Freeman.
So, Captain Shadle, last year, you budgeted the exact same amount as this year for training. So, I'm assuming that you included the two new firefighters on your initiative for training last year, and then you didn't need to use that money since you didn't get those two? And that's why you're assuming you may get them this year? So, that's why that number remained the same?
Two, I mean, we had a, this tuition hotel meals and mileage is largely due to outside certification training and specialty training. And so, last year as well, there was a halt put to that in March. And so, there was some savings there for sure. To keep it the same, yeah, we didn't ask for an increase this year, but it does incorporate new firefighters going to academy and also new paramedics going to paramedic school. And then, specialty training, we are reimbursed a lot for certain different types of specialty training through MABUS. And that's just those classes. Sometimes, they come up each year. Sometimes, they don't. Sometimes, we get into them, and sometimes, we don't. So, it's a, it's largely a variable expense. And we just try and predict, and that's why we're just keeping it the same this year.
Okay. So, if you end up not getting two new firefighters again this year, because I don't know that we're out of the COVID woods quite yet, then that, that would probably be a high number?
Not necessarily. I see where you're coming from, but it depends, too, with retirements. And so, I mean, that's very variable as well. We, we know of one, but we expect potentially three. And so, if we have just new firefighters that come into the fire department, they would potentially have to go to academy, but they might already be certified, and they wouldn't have to. So, again, it's, it's pretty variable, and it's just a best estimate.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Alderman Frank, please proceed.
Okay. Is this training just for new hires? Or is it for, training for other firefighters as well?
It is across the board for everyone, but the largest expense is academy and paramedic school. But other outside training, just like FAE, to get certified drivers and pumppers. And as people move through their career, they get more advanced training, advanced firefighter. And then, they go into company officer, and then advanced fire officer, and things like that. And then, the specialty rescue. So, it's, to answer your question directly, it is for new and existing firefighters and officers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay, moving on. Page nine of 20. This is repair and maintenance of buildings. As you can see up there, the two items are double asterisk. Last year, I chose not to do the tuck pointing on the window sills at fire station number one, just because of things that are going on right now. I think we could have got, we were able to get by without having that happen. If you happen to go by and, and go down that alley next to our station one, you'll notice that they are in need of repair. And so, eventually, this has to take, take place, or we'll be losing our window sills on a, on a building that is really got good bones, structurally sound, and a lot of work has been put into it. So, that's going to happen at some point. The other double asterisk that I have there is mainly for the concrete. This is, this is going to be a repair of concrete at both station number one and station number two. It's becoming somewhat of a hazard. We got too late in the season to be able to do anything about it this year. And so, hopefully, next spring, if we can hopefully get moving on this and get those repairs done before we have maybe an accident out in front of one of our stations due to people walking, street or, you know, sidewalk traffic. So, let's see. Has anyone got any questions pertaining to this particular line item?
I just wanted to ask, the garage doors, garage heaters. I, I just wanted to ask, the garage doors, garage heaters. We just got a new garage heater. Are, are garage doors in need of replacement? I thought we got a new garage door too.
Yeah, good question.
Or is that line item pretty much taken care of, other than the maintenance part?
Yeah, the, the maintenance, there's, there's things that take place when you're, when you're talking about garages and garage heaters. We have right now, I think we have fi- five of the large garage heaters. They are all getting up there in age, so we're anticipating some more, you know, to where they might need repair and/or service. The garage doors, you're right, we have, if you see the lovely garage doors we have down at station one, I'm so thrilled about. Those are brand new, station two, those are brand new as well. So I don't anticipate having any more garage door needs unless of, of course, an accident.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this page? Alderman Reboz.
I don't know if it pertains to this line item, but what, I see there's signs next to the fire station. Is there a possibility, possibility feasible to expand the fire station, fire station one?
It's, um, those two buildings next to us are, are for sale. And that would be something obviously not in this, this era right now of the pandemic, but that's something we should definitely, as a council, should be looking at to, for expansion down there. We are, we've kind of overgrown that, that building. It's difficult to get the command vehicle in there and an engine. Looking to have that ladder one fifty would, would be a great potential for it to be downtown, would be a, better suited for a ladder truck. But yeah, that, there's two businesses right next there, right next to us that would be a welcome addition to our department for the long, you know, long haul in the future, so definitely. Today, you know, if, if people would see, you know, if you look it up and you could see where, when people, when municipalities build fire department or fire stations, they're millions and millions of dollars. Some of your cheaper ones are like five million dollars and it's a simple pole building, you know, with a little bit of brick. They can go up to twelve million dollars. So the opportunity to expand downtown would be a great, great thing for us. And I bet we could, you know, do it for much less than that, build, construct a firehouse.
Remodeling? I was just curious because I've been seeing it for the past weekend, just, I thought was just right, it's located right next to each other and best to expand and it's right next to the river too for better training.
Yep, go ahead, yes, please do.
Chief Heiser and I have been talking about that a, a little bit as a opportunity to acquire those. Interest rates are exceptionally low. There's definitely a need for space at the fire department and it would allow us to have some different manning and operational, it's centrally, centrally located. So we're considering adding a, you know, with the chief's initiative, three response vehicle and a, and a command vehicle. One possibility, which is not a possibility right now, is running that from station one. There's also cramp living quarters and there's really, even in station one right now, we have a utility truck parked up against gear lockers. And then we have at the other station, it's completely full of, of rigs too, which is not a bad problem to have, but there, we're definitely having some, some growing pains. One consideration as well is being prepared to handle space-wise females in the fire service. We have some on our current list and right now, we all sleep together in a, not a real big room, sometimes five of us with no borders or separation or anything like that. So I have talked with Chief Heiser about that and, and put a bug in his ear. It, it might be a good opportunity to get those, to help those businesses out and sell because there's probably not a lot of movement in real estate right now. And also provide an opportunity for future growth and interest rates being as, as low as they are in those properties compared to the relative cost of fire stations are low. And then also not to mention, the central location right there is very good for response times. And if we could have a second response vehicle there instead of south of town, I would choose that. So thank, thanks for bringing that up and thanks for allowing me to speak.
You betcha. Any questions for repair and maintenance of buildings? Okay, page ten of twenty, repair and maintenance equipment. This is, this is the annual equipment testing. We have to, per NFPA, they, they want us to have ladders and hose tested yearly. Our, our air compressor that we use, that's the compressor, that particular compressor is what fills our air packs that we're, that we use to go into fire situations or hazmat situations. This also includes fire extinguisher testing. Annual testing and repair of SCBA's and breathing air, air compressor. We have to have that done each year to maintain certification for quality air that's going into our air packs and our air bottles. Does anyone have any questions on this page here, line item six of twenty?
I do, Al. So I noticed that last year, this line item went up by twenty point seventy-two percent and this year it's going up again by fifty-two point seventy-one percent. So over the last two years, it has technically increased by seven, over seventy-two percent. Is there a reason for that huge increase for maintenance on these?
Yeah, Alderman, ever since I took over, we've been trying to like what I call streamline our budget items. And that's just us moving, we're moving figures around to best put them into the areas that they belong. If that answers your question.
Yeah, so they've been moved from, from other line items into this one?
Yes, that's correct, yeah. And then it's been an ongoing endeavor of ours of me and my administrative assistant. We continue to work on that. We think that we're getting into a good spot right now and a good place to where not much movement should occur from this point forward. Never can say never, but the possibility always exists, but it should be pretty calm. Any other questions? Repair and maintenance equipment. We're now on page eleven, repairs and maintenance to vehicles. This, this one here includes the annual testing of our vehicles such as our aerial ladder and then the pumps, repairs to our vehicles and repairs to pumps, and this is for new tires as well. We have stayed with this figure of fifty-five thousand dollars because of the extreme cost in fixing trucks and also because of the age of two of our engines that we're going to try and limp to the finish line. A nineteen ninety-two Sutfin, old engine one oh one, and then two thousand and two American La France, engine number one zero two. So both of those are, are long in the tooth. I've mentioned this numerous times in this council chambers, that those are getting to their end. And as I stated before, numerous times, that most, like these, these rigs, if they're on, on some other departments, they would not even be in, in function right now. They'd be put, put out the pasture. We have, we're very fortunate to have a, a new, two, a two-year-old Alexis, engine one oh one. And we have the twenty-eleven ladder one fifty. Both of those are relatively new vehicles in, in terms of fire service. We're trying to not necessarily preserve one fifty, but in, in a sense I am. Those, that ladder one fifty was purchased about seven hundred thousand dollars, I believe. And today, that figure will probably be well over a million dollars to replace that, so. Any questions in the vehicle page? Moving on. Page twelve, telephone utilities, sixty, sixty-two hundred, line item. Is, anyone have any questions pertaining to this?
Alderman Freeman, this is Captain Shadle here. This is kind of goes back to one of your other questions about the one line item that went up so much. If you notice, this particular line item, since fiscal year twenty, it went down by about five thousand dollars. And the repairs and maintenance of radios and tablets was moved to that other line item and that's why that one increased, but you will notice a decrease in that one. I just wanted to show you the other side of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on here, page thirteen, physicals. I have not much to say about this, other than that they're mandated. Anything to add to that or no?
Really, we generally don't spend all of this line item, but we budget for it just in anticipation.
Okay, moving on. Okay, this is a difficult year for us in the fire prevention, not in, in, in terms of spending the money that we had allocated to this, to this very important line item, fire prevention education. This year, we're going to come way under our twelve thousand that we had allocated last year, simply, simply because of the pandemic and not being able to get into the schools. So therefore, a lot of that stuff had to be done in, in the firehouse and online and through YouTube videos. Correct in that, or something, YouTube?
Yeah, yeah, I can.
Please do.
Add a little bit.
One of the largest initiatives that we have for fire prevention is our second grade program piloted by, at the time, Lieutenant Heiser. And what we do is we actually teach fire safety and have all the second graders district-wide know what to do in a fire. We get them, give them an incentive to check their smoke detectors at home. We usually have quite a few, like hundreds of detector checks and things like that. But we provide the material to the teachers and the schools. And so that is a large expense. All that material we get from NFPA and provide that to them. The other more expensive education opportunity is our open house, which we obviously couldn't have this year. So we have a large crowd come to that and one of our initiatives and the reason for having the open house, one of the main ones is, is for the fire safety education. And we provide a lot of material for that and so that also wasn't purchased this year due to COVID. So hopefully, next year, we can kick those initiatives off right, right where we left off the year before. And so we would anticipate that we would use the money allocated the same.
Any questions on that line item, fire prevention education? Okay, we're going to move on to page fifteen, emergency medical services. This is a line item that we had put in, in fiscal year eighteen because of the fact that we do so much in the area of, of emergency medical. So we felt we needed to have its own line item. Captain Dave Burdick is our EMS coordinator. Dave does a tremendous job with, with this line item. He seeks, seeks grants, he looks for specials and deals and he's very frugal. And I like Dave for that, so. Okay, all right. So there's no increase in this, even though the COVID, the pandemic, a lot of, a lot of supplies were needed. However, we've been through FEMA, we've been able to get a lot of those supplies through them. So therefore, not, not to an expense to the city, so. Anyone have any questions in the EMS line? Moving on to page number sixteen, office supplies. And I have Captain Shadle for this one as well. He's, a lot, a lot of the stuff is IT support and software and the subscriptions and stuff. We brought that in. You want to comment on anything, unless, anyone have any questions? No?
One highlighter, heads up if, if you guys would notice, software licensing that you see from twenty to this year to the next year, a large increase. And that's due to our main database and reporting software is moving to the cloud and we're not really going to have a choice because it's not being supported the other way as a standalone program as firehouse as we run it now. It's working though and, and serving our needs well, so I've been holding off on making that transition. But once we make the transition to the cloud, it's going to be a lot more expensive to do that. And I mean, initial estimates are like twenty-five hundred dollars previous for updates and supports to seven, eight, nine thousand dollars annually. So just as a heads up, that's something that's just where technology is driving us and then the cost to, to do that. And when that time comes, I'll definitely answer any questions. But there's a little bit of that is, is built in, so when we have to do that, we'll be able to.
I had a question.
Go ahead, Marcia.
So last year, we had it highlighted that we did target solution membership dues, which were new in the fiscal year twenty twenty of thirty-one hundred dollars. And the ESO firehouse software annual fee also for seventeen hundred. And then hashtag Google sixteen hundred, active nine eleven four hundred, Microsoft three hundred, Adobe two hundred and Vipr three fifty. So are, is that still all included in this as well?
Yes, yep, everything that's included. So target solutions is our training tracking platform, helps us with compliance with the state and also ISO and categorizing training and putting it in different credentials that it counts for and things like that. Google G suite is our email and productivity software, Vipers our security. You had mentioned a couple of others, I can't remember off the top of my head, but all of those are the same and still included, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions on that line item? Okay, moving to page seventeen, gas and oil. That's pretty much whatever the, the market bears. Twenty thousand is typically what we do here. If you look back history-wise, it, it's pretty much around that figure with the exception of fiscal year seventeen, whereas like five thousand, over five thousand dollars less. But usually that's right where we're at. Questions? Okay, moving to page eighteen, operating supplies. This is one that is pretty much entails cleaning supplies and batteries and light bulbs and you name it, things that we need at the firehouses to, for, you know, small maintenance and, and what have you. Some meetings on, on occasion, if we have like different agencies come in, we, we might have food for them there because this reciprocating. That's about it. Does anyone have any questions pertaining to this line item, operating supplies?
Just to, just to reciprocate on that, the city pays for, for meetings and, and training and cakes for ceremonies and as such, but for the public, the firefighters pay for their own meals when they're there on their twenty-four, forty-eight, thirty-six hour shifts, whatever they, whatever they have, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. The twenty-four hour shifts is what, what we do. The guys do pay for their own. That's definitely something, we get questions about that, but the guys are. But the guys are, that's out of their pocket, the meals. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions in Operating Supplies? Okay, moving to page nineteen, Miscellaneous Expense. This is one's been there when I took over. It's a, it's a miscellaneous expense, I guess, you know, like some things that we didn't realize we need. And that's what I, I'll use that for, so. Any questions on this one here? Moving to page twenty of twenty, Equipment, Line Item eighty-two hundred. Twenty-five thousand dollars, we've had that in the last four fiscal year budgets. This year, the PPE, I just want everyone to realize that that's the coat and the pants and the gloves and the helmets. Those are large expenditures. If somebody was to wreck their clothes, or wreck their pant, their coats and their pants in a fire situation, we're looking at an expenditure of twenty-five hundred dollars. A lot of times, we can recoup that through an insurance, through the people's insurance. But just know that that stuff is extremely expensive and as it well should be, as far as, it's stuff that guys, we go in into a thousand degree heat and this is the kind of equipment that we need. So it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward, so. Got some other items in there, fire hose replacement. One of the things about fire hoses right now with our fire department is our fire hose is relatively new. I think it's only four years old. So fire hose has a long life expectancy. It's extremely expensive when you do go out and get it, but right now, we're doing really well in that, in that area. So, any questions on equipment?
Yeah. So I know I asked you about this last year, but if you could just do a little refresher on the shared equipment cost with two percent fund, what's that all about?
The two percent fund is, it's an international fund that, that we, I'm probably going to have Shadle, or Captain Shadle, explain the two percent part of it. But, um, you know, might as well start now. Just do it.
All right, the two percent fund is a, a fund, insurance out of state insurance companies, fire insurance, that they reimburse to the city and the city. It's all regulated through the state on how it's set up and handled in the board and how it's handled. But it's essentially made up of a board of fire department members, including the chief. And they're able to purchase needed equipment that, maybe it comes up, maybe it's something that wasn't budgeted for, or some specialty equipment that the fire department believes that they need. And so Becky, you would know exactly, usually it's around thirty or thirty-five thousand on average annually.
Between thirty and forty, sometimes a little bit more, it just depends, right in there. But yeah, once a year, we receive a check from IML, from Illinois USPA League, who manages the, the two percent fund. And it has a breakdown of every single dollar that came from every insurance company. It's a, you know, the document's quite large, but it has a check that goes directly to the two percent fund.
Yep, and so they have meetings and purchase equipment and things like that. And one of the things that the two percent board and the chief like to do is when equipment is needed and maybe it's really expensive and they say, hey, well, we'll do half if, you'll do half. And so we're able to do it that way, so there's less of a burden on the city's budget, but we're able to get some needed equipment. And so that money, whatever comes up or is voted on, that's, it's, so that ten thousand dollars, if Chief Heiser used that whole thing, we'd be getting twenty thousand dollars worth of equipment.
Thank you for refreshing my memory on that.
Okay, any other questions on equipment? Moving to the five-year capital expenses, correct? As you can see, Vehicles, Fire Engine, Engine one oh one, our newest, our newest apparatus. Payment number six or seven will, will take place this year. And then the final payment for that will be next year, fiscal twenty-three, so. And I have up here also, in fiscal year twenty-four, our proposed new engine that I was speaking of earlier. Right now, we have, we're actually using a nineteen ninety-two engine as well as a two thousand two. It depends on which one is, you know, is doing well at that time. We're, we do have, they're in the shop quite often. And we're, like I said, I'm hoping to get it to the finish line. They're both very capable pumping. It's just all the little, little things, like a window might, a window crank might break. And we're talking about vehicles that are thirty or twenty and thirty years old respectively. And the parts are hard to come by, so. The, if anyone had any questions about the, the engines, I'd like to, you know, go ahead and talk more about it if you want to. Anybody? Okay.
So you'll be going with the same brand, Alexis?
Alexis, Alexis has been really good for us, okay? The, it'd probably be up to who will be in administration during that time. So in a couple of years, never know. So I wouldn't want to comment on that, other than the fact that I, I think it's a wonderful manufacturer, manufacturer. It's a manufacturer that's here and been around since nineteen forty-seven. They're here right in Illinois, and they've been really good to us. If we have, we have problems, I am, I'm on a first-name basis with them, and they come up and take care of our problems, so. Good piece of apparatus.
I just had a question about, um, capital expenses.
Okay.
So last week, I asked you about the Office of State Fire Marshal Small Equipment Grant Program that you said that you guys had applied for, and that's up to twenty-six thousand dollars. And then you indicated to me that you've also applied for the Assistance to Firefighters grant as well as the Firehouse Sub Grant.
Yes.
So, um, we're hopeful, right, that we can get some of these grants to help cover some of these, um, items that you have under your capital expense in the equipment column, correct?
That's correct, yeah. Like we, we were talking about last week, the extrication hydraulic tools, those are the one, we're definitely hoping that that comes true for us, as I had stated, that Fire Marshal Matt Perez indicated that the upper half of the state should be receiving these, these funds. And I'm really very optimistic that that's going to occur for us. So as you see there, applied for the small, or the State Fire Marshal Small Equipment Grant. So that is definitely a hope.
Alderman Freeman, this is Captain Shadle. We are regionally applying for an AFG grant. I hope to have it done. The deadline's coming up the middle of February, but it's countywide. So we're trying on the nine-one-one board to shore up some communications issues in the county. And one of the possible solutions is going to Starcom radios. Police is currently on Starcom radio. It's a digital radio instead of an older analog voice radio. And that would only be for dispatch, but to answer your question about how it applies to this, that particular grant, is none of the equipment on here is related to that. I estimated that countywide, it would cost about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to upgrade that equipment. And that's what the grant is, the AFG grant for this year that we're working on as a countywide. So it's our, our department and then the three other fire districts. And then Capron Rescue is working on that. And then the nine-one-one board has also talked about helping with the cost share portion of that. And so that's, it's unrelated, but it is another grant that we're working on. But it's, it's not related to these radios we're talking about here, are just analog VHF radios to get our radios back up to a number where each member can have a radio. A few years back, it's maybe twenty fifteen now, that we came in and we were at a, had a problem of needing a lot of radios, and the price went from a few hundred dollars to, two to four to six thousand dollars, depending on what type of radio that, that we went with. And at that time, we got only enough radios to put one in the vehicle seats. And so the guys used to, and police officers do, get issued a radio. And there's, there's many benefits to that. And so what we've asked in this part of the capital equipment for radios is that over the next three years, we found a suitable radio for two thousand dollars. And it's a good radio, it meets our needs, it allows us to work with our gloved hands. It's not the extra rugged firefighting radio, which is, those are four thousand each. But we've found that this will meet our needs and we'd be able to get a radio into the hands of each firefighter, which means if they come in for recall, they'll have a radio, they don't have to find one off a vehicle. If they do outside training, they'll have a radio and things like that. But as far as the grant, it's not related to those radios up there.
Okay, and then the Firehouse Sub Grant, would that help out at all?
It certainly, yeah, it certainly could. If Firehouse Sub, as you probably well know, it's a, it's a sandwich maker, okay? And they do, they give out a lot of, I believe around ten thousand dollar grants. So we could certainly, we're in the running for something like that as well. Okay?
Thank you, anything else?
No, that's, that's all I have on that. Okay, Technology Needs, Station Alerting System. I put this in here because of the possibility that it might exist. Again, this is a lot of stuff interwoven.
Right, so a lot of this is driven by our dispatch center. So just like our radios, our VHF, our alerting right now is done by VHF, which is analog, not to get too technical into it, but at dispatch, a sound is played over a radio. And then our stations and our pagers hear that. And what sends that to our phone hears those things. Technology, obviously, that's old technology and what most places are going to. And it's, allows for more redundancy and interoperability is a system that works over internet or fiber with the VHF being a backup. So we've, Winnebago County has done this and McHenry County, so our surrounding counties have already done this. But for us, if the dispatch center decides to go to this, this is what, in anticipation, just the box itself for each station, which we have two to receive, is around twenty thousand dollars. And so that, the additional cost would be for message boards, maps that come up when the call comes in. One service side of the new alerting system and why I hope that dispatch goes through with it soon is it will reduce the response time. Right now, when a nine-one-one call comes in, the person listens on the phone, right? And you call and they, they have to talk to the person. And then, and if there's another team dispatcher who can pick up and dispatches right away, they can do that. But if not, the person has to continue. And then our dispatch is a voice, so it is very possible that it's a one, two minute, they have to wait for the phone call. Was there some beep, or did I miss something? Someone leave?
Somebody either got off the phone or-
Okay. So it will reduce the time because what happens is when they punch it in and hit send, it could be instantly, and then the voice that comes over is actually an automated voice, it's not the dispatcher. So it'll free up the dispatchers from doing that. So say someone's not breathing, they'd literally hit the address, someone's not breathing, and hit the button. And that would be literally like a, a ten-second dispatch. And we're notified, we'd get notified throughout our station and then on our phones and tablets and the rigs. So that's a possible anticipated expense, but there's a lot of moving parts. If that happens, it would be countywide as well.
Okay, and finally, then Infrastructure Needs. I have on here Re Roof Station Number One, that'd be the administration side. That's the side that we're presently doing all the remodeling in upstairs. Lieutenant Laterno and firefighter Drawl have been really involved in that, as well as some other guys too. But that, that side of the, the station, that roof is in need of repair. So we'll, we'll probably analyze it again this, this spring, look at it and see if we can, if we can get through another year, we, possible. But I think according to the roofing, the experts, they're saying that it's, it's time, so. Any questions on our capital? Mayor, that's all I have then.
Okay, well, thank you, most informative.
Alderman Burton.
Alderman Burton, you have the floor, please proceed.
Thank you, I just had a quick question for Chief Heiser and Captain Shadle. If, if you were really pressed to make any cuts to this fire budget, which item or items would come to mind first?
Right, you know, looking initial at, at first glance, I'd probably, probably get through with the roof again, potentially for the infrastructure. That would, that'd be twenty-five thousand dollars that we're referring to. So that, that's one that I would look at right there. There's some other areas that we potentially could look at.
Okay, did, thanks, chief. Did, uh, did Captain Shadle have anything to add?
Hi, Alderman Burton. Honestly, without really digging into that a little more, just off the top of my head, I really wouldn't be able to give you a good answer. And I hate to say that, but I would want to not say something and have it not be right. I would want to definitely look into that. And because a lot of times, there's other ramifications. And sometimes, some of these expenditures are, are, I mean, everything is optional if there's not money there, but some of them, you might not be able to avoid. And so I would definitely want to look into that if the time came and the budget came to a situation where we had to make cuts, I'd definitely want to be thoughtful about it and, you know, do research before I would jump into that.
Yeah, thank you, I just wondered, anything off the top of your head? And thank you guys for the presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Alvin, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say with fire and as well as all the other budgets, what you're going to find, being a government entity and a public servant, most of your, most of your budgets are salaries and benefits. So the fire department, I just calculated it, almost ninety-five percent of their budget is salaries, the pension, the health insurance, the uniforms, the training. So just keep that in mind as we go through this. When we start talking about cuts, you know, most of the time, we're going to be talking about people.
Okay, well, thank you. And we'll move on now to the financial year twenty twenty-two police budget. Chief White, you have the floor.
Hey, just a heads up, Alderman Snow is on the phone right now.
Oh, hi Dan, how are you? Terry, any change?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can everybody at, at home hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes, I can hear you.
Great. So the mission statement from the police department, I'm not going to read it verbatim. The Cliff Notes version is, we strive to provide a safe community with professional service. Moving on to twenty twenty, twenty-one accomplishments, our community policing program provided numerous, numerous pallets- numerous pallets of food through the Feed the Need Program. I know we've talked about that several times here at City Council through either updates or donations, so on and so forth, providing food to local pantries and churches. We've also, through the Feed the Need Program, expanded to include four mobile food pantries, which assisted with numerous others. Police Department partnered with YMCA once again for our summer youth outreach out there at Highline and Tobine area, where during the week, they were out there providing meals to kids and Fire Department was out there as well and the Police Department interacting with those in the community. Numerous lives were saved from drug overdoses through our Narcan Program. Our lateral hiring process was initiated and you heard a little bit about that earlier tonight. COSAP grant was applied for and received through the Department of Justice. We are putting the finishing touches on the intergovernmental agreement, should be bringing that to you here in the near future. Police Department experienced and dealt with as pretty much everybody else, not only in our community, but nationwide, Corona mitigation, collaboration with the Health Department, Boone County Sheriff's Department and Boone County EMA. Purchase of body worn cameras with the assistance and approval of the City Council. And as we saw, great interest through the community, as evident by the donations that were received for that. We are looking to continue our patrol remodel and are putting together additional options for that and looking for different funding options as well. Reviewed, revised and updated all of our department policies. Sergeant Ball, Officer Schwartz, Officer Schutz, Kaplan, Wyland, received lifesaving awards for the rescue of a woman from the Kishawaki River. Officer Parker received a Valor Service Award for his efforts during this rescue. I was also notified that he's been contacted by the American Red Cross and they're looking at providing him potentially with an award as well. So hopefully, we will be bringing you information about that here in the near future. New hires for the Police Department, Officer Anthony Jones was hired on March 27th of 2020 and Officer Jonathan Lurch was hired on July 22nd, 2020. Officer Jones has just recently graduated our field training processes and currently in solo patrol. So that we're extremely happy for him and with him and look for, for great things. Officer Lurch is still in the FTO process. And then objectives going forward for the Police Department, there's been objectives that have been on last year's objectives as well and with COVID preventing us from being able to implement some of these, they may seem, you may have remembered them from last year. The Belvider Police Department coordinating a public education program, BPD use of force. I think it's very important for us to be able to educate the community and hopefully bring some perspective and context to when and why force is used and ultimately, you know, answer some of those tough questions. So that's something that I would look forward to in the future. As soon as we're, we're able to get back to a little bit of normalcy, we'll be doing that. Multicultural Citizens Police Academy is planned. Deputy Chief Wallace is working with Alerta and one of our police commissioners is trying to coordinate that with different groups within the community so we can reach out and hopefully be able to provide some information about our department to other areas within our community that maybe have gone under representative in the past. The Police Department will host an open house, will follow in the footsteps of the Fire Department, see what, how much of a success that is with the community. We want to kind of resemble that and just bring people into the Public Safety Building, show them around. And I, I know on smaller stages, we have, you know, kids and parents and different groups come through and they always seem to enjoy it, so we want to kind of expand that as well. The Community Policing Program has actually gone into the high school and presented to some of the students there. Again, kind of like a community or Citizens Police Academy for high school age kids. And that, that was received well and something we're looking forward to doing again in the future. And then COSAP, Expansion of Outreach Prevention of Substance Abuse, Domestics and Mental Health. For those of you that remember and for those of you that don't, the COSAP grant is what the Police Department is currently working with the Boone County Health Department as well as the Boone County Mental Health Task Force, trying to provide through a grant provided by the Department of Justice to provide a police officer, a veteran police officer, to the Boone County Health Department and to be proactive in providing some of that outreach as it pertains to drug abuse, mental health issues and domestic violence. So we look forward to the Council reviewing that information and hopefully their approval of that grant going forward. Is there any questions about that? Pretty straightforward so far. So if there's no questions, we'll go ahead and move forward to the, this year's budget. Page one, I would like to point out, for everything that doesn't necessarily pertain to employee, employee wages or anything having to do with contractual or union type of expenditures, the Police Department is showing a reduction in overall budget of $6,811. Some of those costs are outside of our control, as I explained, kind of the, you know, the wages that are set by contract and some of the associated costs with, with the employees. So, so moving on, if there's no questions, page two of 20, salaries. So hopefully, for those who are not in attendance, you got an email sent sometime today. Apologize for it being last minute, but it's something that we've been putting together. So if you wouldn't mind referring to it, it says salary comparisons of administrative assistant positions. I just wanted to bring some awareness to this area. This is not something that the Police Department, beyond what the city is already planning on for wage increases. But with the leaving of Michelle Mitchell, who was our Administrative Assistant for Investigations, that caused me and my command staff to post and hire a new employee. And in the process of doing that, we found it somewhat difficult in terms of wages to attract, well, we speculated that the wages, as they were, may not necessarily attract the quality personnel that we were hoping for. We, we actually hit a home run with Maria Casas, who ended up applying and has been a great fit. But it, it caused me to wonder what the comparisons were out there for administrative assistants. So we did some research to see if, you know, my speculation was, was right or wrong, plain or simple. And so the research that we found is listed in this document that I passed out to those that are in attendance and emailed to those that are at home, just to give you an idea of what some of the surrounding agencies are paying their administrative assistants specifically. And this is really to help just provide some perspective going forward for future budgets that maybe the city may want to address, just to make sure that we're going to be competitive with other agencies and get the best personnel that we possibly can when, you know, those openings do come up. And crunching the numbers that we found, the median salary for administrative assistants is $41,162. Our administrative assistants, we just hired Maria at $33,280. The next administrative assistant, who is Judy Terramina, who has about 10 or 11 years on the job, makes just over that at $33,467. Now Sandy Daniels, who's been here 27 years, makes more than that. But again, I stress, she's been here 27 years, she makes $53,815. Now, it sounds like a lot, but again, when you look at some of these comparables, it really is not really in the ballpark. And Cherry Valley is the lowest comparable that is on this list. And our administrative assistants, Judy and Maria, are 6% below them. They are, if you look at just the median, they're 24% below the median salary. So again, I present this to you simply for awareness. Going forward, it may be something that, you know, talking with the Finance Director, maybe we can come up with some outside the box ways of addressing this disparity and hopefully in the future, bring something to the Council that is palatable. Trust me, I know trying to address such a large gap is not something we're going to be able to do all at once. But I would ask that going forward, just, you know, come in with an open mind. This, this year is obviously not the year with COVID and the uncertainties financially. But going forward, you know, I present to you, just to take this into consideration and, and food for thought. So is there any questions on any of that information that I've presented so far?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
So you, you didn't include the entry level pay for the Boone County Sheriff's Department, which I think is our most comparable out of all these other departments. And if I'm reading this right, after 22 years with the Boone County Sheriff's Department, the salary would be $41,653 after 22 years?
That is absolutely correct. And definitely something, if I worked for the Sheriff's Department, I'd be taking a look at and bringing before the appropriate Finance Committee. But in terms of the entry level pay, yes, if somebody can point me in the right direction to get that information, I would be more than willing to do the legwork on it. But unfortunately, when we did our research, nobody seemed to have that information. So everybody had been there for so long, that's kind of what we're dealing with. It wasn't apples and apples because they had been there so many more years.
Okay. And so when we hire these people, is the pay commensurate upon this individual staying or will they potentially just be training here and then leaving to go to a more lucrative position somewhere else?
Well, obviously, that's always the concern. If the wages aren't comparable with, with other areas, could they come here and get some training and, and skills and experience? Absolutely. I mean, it would be no different than what we look at for police officers and why it's so important to have comparable wages for police officers because we want the people that do come here to stay here. We take great pride in the environment that we provide, but that's only going to get you so far when you're having to, you know, buy food for your, for your family.
And do they get, are they, do they get a pension?
Yes, the full-time employees receive pension as well as health insurance and the other benefits.
Is Sandy Daniels looking to retire soon?
My understanding is yes, and don't quote me on this, I think we're looking at about four or five years. I'm, I'm trying to convince her to stay as long as I'm there, but I think she's on her own timeline.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no other questions, I'll go ahead.
Oh, I don't have one on that, but I do have one on the salary page, page two. That's where we're at, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So last year, you put in a new initiative for a part-time community service officer at 19 hours a week for $18,389, which you did not receive. But this year, you also have your part-time CSO in the budget for $25,688. So that's an increase of $7,299 over one year's time.
Sure. I'll, I'll start it and you can clean it up. So what we did, because obviously, we didn't get either of those positions last year, so we were trying to come up with a new and innovative way of addressing both problems. So by combining both responsibilities into one position, we're looking at actually a cost savings rather than hiring two part-timers, hiring one part-timer for right now and having them responsible for both, not only the fleet maintenance of the Police Department, but assisting Carol with some of the ordinance violation as well. The increase in that would cause us or require us to have them work a few more hours than we anticipated for the 19-hour part-timer for the CSO or fleet maintenance officer. So we would anticipate that they would just have to work a few more hours each week by combining both into one position.
Okay, that explains it, thank you.
I think that's pretty much it for page two, unless there's other questions. If not, moving on to overtime. You'll notice that our overtime, we are requesting, and the budget is the same as last year. Typically, in any given budget preparation process, we will take the money we spent at mid-year and project it out to try and speculate a, an expenditure for the following year. With this last year being what it was, we just weren't able to do that. So we would anticipate having the same budget as the previous year, if this ended up being a typical budget year, that would, the expenditure of $406,000 would be sufficient to cover our overtime costs. This last year was just exceptional. I mean, our court time was down, our IMPACT, which is the Innovative Methods of Policing Against Crime Trends, which used to be our gang, gang, gang unit, intervention unit, and trainings down, special events, we didn't have a lot of those that normally would cost us overtime. Our IDOT, which is reimbursable, but some of those, we didn't end up actually having because of COVID. And then the typical overtime that we had for District 100, which a lot of that, if not all, is reimbursable as well, but a lot of that is overtime that didn't get spent that we would anticipate would go back to normal once the restrictions, the COVID restrictions are lifted. Any questions on page three, overtime? Police pension, I do not have my equivalent of Captain Shadle here with me, so if you have questions, I'll be more than happy to take them and get you an appropriate answer. Page five, health insurance. I do have a I do have a finance director, however, so if you have any questions.
And this is similar to fire, you'll notice a reduction in health insurance down about forty-five thousand dollars, if I'm reading that correctly. So that's a cost savings to the city.
Do you want to touch on dental claims at all? Or does anybody have any questions about dental claims or health insurance? Moving on to page seven, uniform allowance. Essentially, we had budgeted for the forty-three officers, including the replacement for Sergeant Staples. In addition to that, we would have one additional uniform allowance to account for the COSAP grant if that is approved by the council. Otherwise, the uniform allowance is contractual and it's established by CPI, which I would have to ask Attorney Drela what that stands for. But ultimately, it's less than what the union used to get, which was four percent every year. Any questions on uniform allowance?
I have a question.
Please proceed, Alderman Frank.
Chief, it would be the same question I had for the fire department, according to uniforms. Do they get paid and then reimbursed, or how does that work?
No, contractually, they get a check cut by the city and they are required to use that for maintenance and upkeep of their uniforms.
Okay, do we pay for dispatch at all?
Through the fifty-fifty process, through the city-county, I believe we do have a portion of that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on uniform allowance, page seven? Page eight, training. You're going to notice that this went up about nine thousand dollars. And the reason for that is with the legislative changes of fines and fees, July of two thousand and nineteen, the state has noticed that their portion of those fines and fees has been significantly reduced. And the way that they have handled that is previously, the state would, the police department would send somebody to the academy. And then that academy would bill the state for that training. The state would then pay the academy and the police department or sheriff's department, whatever agency it was, wouldn't have to take that money out of their budget. Well, that's changed. Last year, the state decided that the police department or whatever agency it involved was going to have to pay for that academy. And then the state would reimburse the department as opposed to the academy. We're being told now that the police department is going to have to pay for that training out of their budget. And they'll reimburse us if there's any money. So that's significantly, a significant cost increase to all of the area departments, including ours. And that's where that price increase is reflected. Any questions on page eight, training? Repairs and maintenance equipment. This line item is generally just addressing most of our contractual services over the year. There's really nothing extraordinary about any of them unless there's questions that I can field. Moving on to page ten of twenty, repairs and maintenance vehicles. You'll notice that this line item overall has gone down by almost eighteen thousand dollars. And that's reflected in the squad car maintenance. And that is due to almost half of our fleet having vehicle warranties. In addition to, you may remember, earlier in the year, we had traded in approximately thirteen vehicles and had gotten three new vehicles for various reasons, for the department, training, and undercover work, so on and so forth. And so that has impacted our maintenance budget. And when looking at what we've had to spend and projecting out what we anticipate spending, we felt that eighty-five thousand dollars was a comfortable number that we could operate within. Any questions on any of that? Moving on to page eleven, telephone and utilities. The top line Verizon, AT&amp;T, FirstNet are all cell phone expenditures. All of our detectives, sergeants, command staff have cell phones that they utilize at the behest of the department. And due to that benefit, the expectation is when we need them, they will answer. So that there is definitely a benefit to the department in an emergency situation. And we've used it several times and we've yet to have an issue. Local service is our service that our hardline, right Becky?
Correct, that is our hard service.
Repair reprogramming charges would be for any radios that if, for whatever reason, they needed to be reprogrammed, that would come out of that. Starcom twenty-one service is the service that Motorola charges us for all of our radios, which are a must-have every year. And then the base station was something that ended up getting rolled into the Starcom service. So we zeroed that one out. The increase, twenty-two-five to twenty-five thousand for Starcom, is just reflective of their price increase for the year. There was really nothing we can do about that, that's just Motorola's cost to us. Any questions on page eleven? Physical exams, this is something that is extended as a contractual issue to the employees. And some take advantage of it, some don't. So it's something that's budgeted for every year and is there if the city needs it. Any questions on page twelve, physical exams?
Yeah, are these gonna, is this gonna end up including if there's a fee for COVID vaccinations?
I would anticipate that this would be the line item that they would take that expense from.
I'm assuming they'll be free, but just in case.
Yeah, and as I previously stated, we have employees that don't take advantage of this benefit. And there's generally some additional monies in there. But if everybody did take advantage of it, that would be an appropriate number to budget. Okay, if there's no additional questions on page twelve, I'll move on to community policing, page thirteen. This line item is one that we see every year. This is pertaining to our community policing program, something that we're very proud of and has been increasingly more successful in outreach to the community. Something we continue to try and think outside the box and engage the community and hopefully be able to bring about perspective, context, and awareness as to what the police department does for our community and why we do it. And it's something that Deputy Chief Wallace, Officer Blankenship, who's our community policing coordinator, has done a fantastic job at doing. And it's something we try and build upon every year, as I spoke on a little bit ago, with some of the initiatives we're looking to do. But specifically, our Citizens Police Academy, that's going to be an expenditure for those academies that we have twice a year, possibly more coming in the future. And it covers any associated costs with beverages or refreshments for those that are in attendance. Or if the community policing coordinator needs any type of supplies, that would come out of that line item. And crossing guard picnic, Sergeant Spaha has been fantastic at coordinating this crossing guard picnic every year. And that's to acknowledge and recognize all of the crossing guards from all of the different schools throughout Belvidere. And one day, we bring them out to the fairgrounds, or we used to do other areas within the city. And we cook them lunch and we provide prizes and just try and give them a day for their volunteer and hard work that they've done throughout the school year. Again, like so many other things, it's something we weren't able to do this year, but hopefully, we can get back to it next year.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
And I have a question too. So the crossing guard picnic, I was a crossing guard back in the day at Logan's School. We had ours at Sunstrand Park and it was awesome, thank you for that. I'm glad that that tradition is still in play. I want to go back to the physical exams. Do we, do we cover our female officers' breast cancer exams?
We'd probably have to take a look at the contract and see, under our health insurance, it would be covered. I'd have to look and see as far as the contract for any type of copays.
Okay, but that wouldn't be covered under just these physical exam line item for, just for free? That would be a copay thing, you think?
Could be a copay, that would be, I'd have to go back and look at that.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing anything in the contract that specifically provides a benefit for that type of testing. Just like any additional testing for our male officers, that would all be covered under health insurance.
Okay, and then what is a PSA test? You have ten at one eighty-five?
I know what it is, what it stands for, I'm going to need help with.
It's a blood test, I believe, for your prostate.
I'm going to go with Alderman Stevens on that.
So we, so we cover prostate testing for men, but not breast cancer exams for women?
We'll have to look in, we'll have to look at the contract and see. I don't remember seeing specific language on that, but we can take a look.
Okay, because it seems if we're covering, you know, prostate exams, we should cover breast exams, just saying.
Yeah, and I'm not saying you're wrong, but those are things that have been negotiated in the past and probably something that the union would have to address going forward. And it looks like Attorney Drela has something to say.
Alderman Freeman, the, there's a list in the contract of the covered examinations. Those were asked for by the union, then negotiated and agreed to by the city. So if it's not, there's something that the union didn't ask for. Not to say we couldn't include it on our own, but that would be why it's missing, because it was not asked for. I don't know if this line item also covers the line of duty exams we do from time to time as the need arises. Those are actually non-contractual, but we do have the right to send an officer to an examination when we have some concerns. So those are covered by this line item as well.
Okay.
Any other questions on the physical exams, page twelve?
One simple one if I can, is this going to include the COVID vaccines? We're going to possibly get, or does that not cover the COVID?
Yeah, and I would anticipate that this is the line item that would be taken out of if that's something that ended up being a cost to the employee. But we don't know, one, if there will be a cost, and two, how much that's going to be. Moving back to community policing, was there any questions on that? Moving to page fourteen, K-9 program expenses. The only addition to that line item would be the K-9 tracker account access. What that is, is software that we purchased in order to keep track of all of the K-9 activity. The old software that we used to use was outdated, archaic, and just extremely difficult to try and get information from and utilize. But of course, with every software anymore, there's a licensing fee every year. And this one is a hundred and forty-four dollars licensing fee for every year for that software. Any questions on the K-9 program expenses? Sex offender state dispersments is money that the department collects and then distributes to the state treasurer, state police, and attorney general as outlined by statute. So this is not something that is an expense for the police department. We get the money from the sex offender when they register. And then we are responsible for the dispersment of that money to the appropriate agencies. If there's no questions on page fifteen. Page sixteen, office supplies, essentially is just what it sounds. Office supplies, pens, paper, notepads, thumb drives, which tends to drive our office supply costs way up with the amount of video that we have to take, either recording different interviews or downloading security video. We're covering security video, downloading witness interviews, photo lineups, things like that. We utilize thumb drives and they're not cheap. Any questions?
Yes, Alderman Porter.
I'm assuming this one's going to go up because of the body cam and all the things you have to go through with preserving body cam video?
No, that's not going to be addressed in this particular line item. That's going to be something that is going to be handled through IT and through the PSB budget because that's going to go on to servers. So that video is then downloaded onto those servers. So anytime they need to address additional space, IT has to purchase servers, which are going to be a lot more expensive than thumb drives. But yeah, our thumb drive usage has increased. When we have to provide discovery to the state's attorney's office, we have to put squad car video on thumb drives a lot of times. A lot of this different security video, we have to make copies and we put those on thumb drives and all of that by statute we're obligated to do. Any other questions for office supplies? Gas and oil has remained the same from the previous year. And looking at what our expenditure is and projecting what we think it's, our needs are going to be, we came to the usage of approximately forty-five thousand gallons. And at a cost estimate of two dollars and fifty cents per gallon, that was the total that we came up with. And if one of those two variables changes, that could directly affect, obviously... that could directly affect, obviously, the end cost. But that is our educated estimate at this point. Any questions on that?
Yeah, Alderman Burton?
Please proceed.
Hey, hey, chief. Thank you, mayor. Hey, chief, just to back up for a second. Talking about the cameras and the servers, do we know, are the county, are they going to utilize cameras as well?
Body cams? Alderman Burton, you referring to body cams?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, not at this point. It looks like the new legislation is going to require them for all of the agencies in Illinois. So I believe that is, we're looking at that implementation approximately three years from now. So there's no information that I have at this point where they are looking to implement them any sooner than that. But that's not specifically a conversation that the sheriff or I have had recently.
Okay, thanks, chief. I just didn't know if we knew.
No, but in terms of the cost of those servers, in talking to IT, they had estimated over the next five years roughly costing $5,000 in additional storage, which when we looked at other body camera companies, their storage solutions, which primarily were the cloud, you're talking tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. So in comparison, it's significantly cheaper to keep that storage in-house.
Okay, thanks, chief.
Welcome. Moving to page 18 of 20, operating supplies. These are all day-to-day supplies that the police department could potentially need. These are generally consumables and is a, an estimate based off of what we've used in previous years and up to the point that we began the budget process. You'll see ammunition is, as it always will be, one of the largest amounts on that line item. And it's just due to the cost of the ammunition and our dedication to training.
Questions or comments?
Any questions on operating supplies? If there's no questions, move to page 19, miscellaneous expenses. Yeah, these are going to be year-to-year expenses that are going to be roughly the same. It looks like from '20 to '21, there was a jump primarily due to moving the drug ops into this line item. I would have to do additional research as to find out why we decided to do that that way. But ultimately, last year, we revised that number 'cause drug operations for the city used to be $15,000 a year that the city would provide for our narcotics investigations. With the merging with the county into the metro narcotics unit, we were able to drop that down to $8,000, almost half. Any questions on that page for miscellaneous expenses? Equipment, page 20 of 20. On here, you will see, it looks like roughly... Most of the expenditures are going to be either less or the same as we've requested in previous years, 'cause the equipment itself hasn't changed, with a few exceptions. One exception is at the very top, breathalyzer for our patrol. Our current breathalyzer is almost 20 years old. And about a year and a half ago, it started making some very strange noises. What our breathalyzer is, is what our officers utilize to detect the breath alcohol concentration in either a DUI offender or a minor that we suspect has been consuming alcohol. About a year and a half ago, when it started making those noises, I had Deputy Chief Wallace check with the state, have their repair person come check it out, which they did. They were able to fix it in what they deemed to be a short-term Band-Aid and said that probably over the next couple of years, you're gonna need to be replacing the unit. Given the extent of what a new one would cost, we figured we'd write it out. It has since started making that noise again, and appears to be time that we need to replace it. Unfortunately, state bid has a new one at roughly $8,500. We've budgeted $9,000, because by the time the budget process goes through, it's been my experience that a lot of those expenditures do tend to increase in cost even slightly. So $9,000 should be something that we should be able to anticipate costing for a new breathalyzer. In addition to that, there was a slight increase from $1,000 to $1,400 for electronic headsets. That's just an increase in the cost of the headsets that we have to purchase for our SWAT team. And then at the very bottom, we've put in a new budget request, expenditure request, for chairs for our detectives. Five chairs at approximately $280 for a total cost of $1,400. The chairs they currently have have difficulty even staying upright. Some of them no longer have any, if it was leather at one point, no longer is. And we've gotten the, our money's worth out of the current chairs, and they have reached their end of life. So the remainder of the equipment that you would see, for the most part, would be equipment that we would anticipate needing to be replaced at some point. We're not saying that it's something we would have to buy, but if ultimately some of this equipment failed us, we would have something budgeted so we would be able to replace it with minimal interruption in operations. Any questions on page 20 of 20?
I have multiple questions on this page.
Please proceed, Alderman Freeman.
So, chief, last year, when we got things, they were crossed off, such as the very desk. And then last year and this year, barrier system, because we purchased that stuff. So I'm seeing things like computer replacements for investigations, two at $1,100, which we also had last year. Actually, we placed three for investigations last year. And then security, squad security drawers, two at $1,750. And we actually replaced two last year at $1,750. Then, under patrol, we also have another computer replacement and an iPad and tablet. And then last year, we, for the SWAT team, got night vision monocular and a monocular adapter, which now they're on here again this year. The bipods are actually crossed off. But then under administration, last year, we also replaced two computers at $1,100, and they're also on here again. And we also replaced three chairs for administration last year at $300 each. And now you're looking for three more chairs for administration and one chair for patrol at a whopping $600 for one chair. So are we like double, double, triple dipping some of this stuff? Or has some of this stuff already been purchased and we can cross it off?
No, ma'am. Actually, none of the above. So given the financial uncertainty of this fiscal budget year, we really haven't purchased anything that we had requested in last year's budget process. There's been, oh.
Continue on with what you said. Looking at the line items so far that they've spent in this budget year, they've only spent $14,500. So they've only spent 22% of the budget in this line item.
Yeah, and Alderman Freeman, just to give you an idea, for some of the pieces of equipment that we need that are very expensive, like the night vision monocular, that is for one unit, and our entire team needs it. But I understand that to ask for, you know, that much equipment in one budget year isn't necessarily responsible for the taxpayer, so I try and piecemeal it but budget process by budget process, with the intent of reaching the total amount, you know, in multiple years. So yes, it is very true, you may see the same piece of equipment multiple years in a row, but it's because we need multiple pieces of equipment and just trying to minimize the impact to the city in terms of tax dollars spent.
Okay, that's great. I just question it because we don't, we don't always get to see what you guys buy. It's, you know, it's just that it's in the budget, so you guys just go ahead and get it, because it's been budgeted for. So that's why I'm just wondering if some of this stuff got purchased and you just need more, or if, obviously, you didn't purchase it. So that's why I question it.
Yeah, no problem. And yeah, I mean, another good example is the Motorola Starcom radios four. If you remember, the last couple of years, I've come to city council and requested the four that we've budgeted for, 'cause ultimately, we need 43. So, you know, that could be a decade worth of budget process.
Snow has a question.
Go ahead, Alderman Snow.
So when it comes to the breathalyzer, we only have one for the whole police department? Or is this one of four that's gone bad?
No, police department has one breathalyzer. It's contained in our holding area.
Okay, so this is not the breathalyzer that would be used in the field, or we don't have them for the field?
We have portable breath, portable breathalyzers that our officers have, but they are considerably different. The breathalyzer that we are requesting is certified by the state and can actually be used for court purposes, where the portable breathalyzers can only be used in obtaining or establishing probable cause.
Okay, thank you much.
Welcome. Are there any more questions on the equipment page, page 20? Moving on to capital expenses. We, the police department is bare bones here. No surprise, we're requesting additional squad cars. We requested four or five last year, and ultimately, because of the financial situation, we were able to replace two of them. And we're looking at... Multiple squad cars. We have one 2012, two 2013s, two 2014s that we're gonna be looking at potentially replacing. Again, the time that the budget process happens and ultimately, when they're approved and we can actually order them, some of the squad cars may change in terms of the ones we're looking to rotate out of the fleet. It all depends on if there's additional maintenance problems with some of them. And that's kind of a fluid situation that we have to keep, continue to monitor. The goal previously was to get as many vehicles as we could, as quick as we could, under the warranty. There has been some changes with that in terms of working with the dealership. The company that provides the warranties now look at an hourly basis on a vehicle as opposed to mileage, which for our police cars is significantly different because our police cars do run a lot more than just your average, everyday vehicle. So that's probably something going forward that may not be realistic for us to continue to consider. However, we do currently have 11 vehicles that are under warranty. And any additional vehicle that the city's allowed to purchase for the police department, you know, adds to that warranty process. And I think we've demonstrated with the reduction in the maintenance costs that we're requesting that the warranties really do make an impact. We're able to rotate those problem vehicles out and ultimately replace them with vehicles that, for, you know, five years, are going to be covered in terms of any major mechanical expenses. Any questions on the capital page? Without any additional questions, that concludes the police department's budget presentation. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chief Woody.